Do you have any questions?
We call you, Mr.
Mr. Cucaracha. Honorable Franklin S. Menia Jr. Honorable Jose Victor Imbo.
Present.
Honorable Nino Sayson. Present. Honorable Antonio Remolio.
Present.
Honorable Peter Catán.
Present.
Honorable Indany Ramon.
Present.
Honorable Manuel Patrimonio.
Present.
Honorable Manuel Arbon.
Present, sir.
Honorable Danilo Leon.
Present.
Honorable Layun Benugol. Your Honor, we have nine members present, including the Honorable Presiding Officer. With nine councilor's positions including the Presiding Officer, there is a problem. Do I hear any motion to discuss the reading of the minutes of previous session? Any seconded remarks, any objection? That being noted, this is approved. We have about two summary of the minutes. So let us consider firstly, minutes, summary of the minutes of the previous session. Any correction matters arising from the summary of the minutes of previous session? It could be ignored, so Councilor Patrimonio?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session dated January 21, 2015.
Any second?
Second.
Do you hear seconded remarks, any objection? Hearing none, this is approved. What about the special session, summary of the minutes of the special session? Do you have any amendments, corrections, or matters arising from the summary of the minutes of the previous special session? Do I hear any motion to consider our summary of the minutes of the
Mr. Chairman, I move to consider and approve the minutes of the previous session. The City Council of Domagete dated January 26, 2015.
Any second?
Second.
Do you hear seconded remarks? Any objections? Hearing none, this is approved. Do you listen to the committee reports?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilor Remolio, yes.
I move to avail a question of privilege, Your Honor.
Any second? Do I hear any second?
Second.
Do you hear seconded remarks, any objections? Hearing none, this is approved. Yes, Mr.
Thank you very much, Mr.
Mr. Cucaracha.
When I went over the agenda for today's regular session, I was shocked to find out that the second reading for the proposed ordinance, which was unanimously approved on first reading last Wednesday, January 21, was not included for second reading. I made representation with the very able secretary to the City Council and members of the Secretariat, and together with author of said ordinance, Honorable Counselor Manny Arbon, we went through the sequence of events. Last January 14 was the crux of the problem when the pedicab drivers had a tingil pasada. So that on January 21, Wednesday, this humble presentation, because at that time, when I presented this, Honorable Arbon was out. I submitted for approval on first reading. An am mendatory ordinance, two ordinance, one 77 series of 2007, and amended in 2011. And the minutes of that session, which we have just approved, would tell us that I did make a referral to the Committee on Traffic and Transportation and to the Committee on Rules, Ordinances, and Legal Matters. To the effect that there was a committee as a whole and public hearing that was scheduled on Friday, January 23. So that in effect, that committee as a whole would have been deemed as a committee meeting to the proposed ordinance already, wherein we had our additional public hearing, because we have had several public hearings, wherein we heard the sentiments of the general public, represented by the various different sectors, that of the religious sector, the senior citizens, the students, the business sector, aptly represented by the president of the Negro-Saintal Chamber of Commerce and Industry and a person of Mr. Edward Do, wherein he also did put forth their computations on inflation. And of course, the transport sector was also represented by members of the operators and the MCH tricycle divers. There was a special session scheduled in January 26, wherein Honorable Arbon and myself would have expected, as provided for in our internal rules, section 56, that entitled "Period to Report", the committee shall submit a report favorable or adverse to the proposed ordinance within five working days, which would have been that Monday. But it was deemed necessary that a committee report will not be coming from the committee as a whole, but specifically on the Committee on Traffic and Transportation, Rules, Ordinances, and Legal Matter. On January 26, Honorable Counselor Danilo Tevez Leon introduced for first reading another version to the effect of looking at the rates, basic fare rates. Up to that point, Honorable Arbon and myself were still waiting that we would have been invited to such needed committee meeting, so that a committee report would have been done. Our proposed ordinance was already in its draft form last Friday, when we had our public hearing. Through the time and after listening to the public hearing and to the special session on January 26, we made additional refinements to our proposed ordinance. However, we were informed that a meeting happened yesterday, January 27. Again, Honorable Manuel Manny Arbon and this humble presentation were surprised why we were not invited to such meeting, wherein an actual committee report would have been done to the approved proposed ordinance on first reading last January 21. Now, we come to today's agenda to find out that number one, it was not included. And we believe, we contend, that this should be heard on second reading, even if there are other arguments to the effect that none of what would have happened was done by the committees who were supposed to hear this. Ang atuang lang ikalibukan ani unano nga dilim ang tagaan ng pagtagatong amua ng proposed ordinance na unta ibasihan man to sa pipila na kabuo public hearing. Gani pagpasulod ni Honorable Danilo Tevez Leon sa iya proposed ordinance last Monday, I opposed because I was not agreeable to its title. Honorable Arbon approved because of the basic reason that all proposed ordinances are going to be good, but he can explain that himself. And then, there was the motion that a survey was to be done yesterday to the effect that Honorable Manuel Manny Arbon and this humble presentation opposed because a survey would be unnecessary. We have already conducted a series of public hearings, wherein we have already heard the sentiments of the people. What more additional sentiment or survey are we going to need? It would seem as if we are just going to utterly disregard the several public hearings that were conducted since December and the month of January. Also, we believe that when we have actually done a backyard survey on our own, so that we will be ably supported in our proposed ordinance. But a survey done in one day, and if you would see the questionnaire that was given yesterday, I cannot understand how we will be able to arrive to a certain degree as to how we are going to go about it. We checked in the proposed ordinance of Honorable Danilo Tevez Leon and this humble presentation and other legal luminaries that I have consulted would believe that if there are no refinements done on the proposed ordinance, this cannot be approved by the Sangguniang Pandalawigan. Basic factor that is missing would be the data that will be used to arrive into a certain basic fare rate for the city of Domagete. Since we still have so many things to consider, Your Honor, already submitted and received by the Secretariat is the proposed ordinance authored by Counselor Manuel R. Arbon and this humble representation, to which additional refinements have been done to the effect that when we are going to take this up this afternoon for second reading, we already even have an amended title to the original title, which I had approved for first reading on January 21, and other refinements to this four-page resolution. Your Honor, I would like to end that the problem with regard to the basic fare rate has escalated. Niabotanik dua kasimana bisan tuho dumi hangyo taas sa mga pedicab drivers, og sa mga sumasakay, nga atuang tagaan ng pagtagan, og respeto ang maong balawat nga size 50 ang balayanan. Pero ni hangyo tama ang mahimo, masabot-sabot ang nila usa. Pumutibalaon mani, ipirmahan man dayon sa mayor atuang tagaan ng respeto. Ang problema daghan pa kayo mga pedicab drivers ang walak makai-balo. Gawas sa naapagiuwan mga pedicab drivers nga dilim utuman. Gawas niya't to pipila ko, mawala ng diabo mausa ang ilang pamatasan. nga dilim pareho sa batasan sa mga taga-Domagete, nga respetuso nga pagkatawo. Your Honor, we have this proposed ordinance that would be in your tables, and we are going to hope and pray that this is going to be included in our agenda today, so that we will be tackling two proposed ordinances today. We can make comparisons, we can join them together, we can do whatever we want to do. In fact, we can make everyone authors of this ordinance. Kana ang pag-o-otod mo na importante gani itong human sa January 21 duol na po ang atuang buutan Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Vice Mayor Wooddoma Killig. Og nyingon siya nga ton, pwede bang iabir na to pag-o-otod? Ni pa-afili, gali, i-mas motion na, o'ny problema. Ang atuang lang diyan nga matagaan dayon og pinakadali, pinakasayon nga solusyon ang maong problema ka roon sa nagbayan sa Domagete. Again, Your Honor, lastly, hopefully, our proposed ordinance would be included for second reading today, because we believe, as we have consulted many of the different sectors, that this is a very good ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to clarify in line with the statement of Counselor Remolio. Maybe you know from the members of this Ogos Party that you received the draft ordinance of Counselor Remolio? Because it is obviously both right and duty of these members of this Ogos Party to be fully informed of the draft ordinance, because we cannot intelligently discuss umdika ita makareview, ita makapasal sa proposed ordinance. Counselor Remolio, taking it's a namang imo tanim, apil sa second reading. Are you ready to discuss the ordinance? Na wapanyo madawan, wapanyo makapasal, wapanyo maga-toon. So, Mr. Chairman, would like to know whether the members of this Ogos Party received the copy, the copies of that particular proposed ordinance? So that we can intelligently discuss. Counselor Remolio.
Patrimonio, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I accept the, I received also the proposed ordinance of Honorable Arbon and Honorable Remolio. That is why if we can harmonize between the proposed ordinance of the gentleman from Tacloban, Daro, and Magnao, and then we can harmonize it, because we are here as part of the solution. We are not here to be part of the problem. This is what I love. Na og mahimo lang atong nagtao, nga umayo ang kadandad, og kera puningila, og ato lang i-harmonize. Kana ang ako magod nga ako ang pangalan ko, personalities, my personal opinion nga ni Anita Lino nagalastingong sa katauhan sa nagbayan sa Domagete, isip kunsiyang solusyon sa problema ang atong gipulong. And we are not part of the problem. So, I hope that the gentleman who authored both ordinances, which is good for the public, maabrihan nila unang una to harmonize both this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselora Tandalion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard my personality being mentioned on the privilege speech of Honorable Remolio, because I was the acting committee chair on transportation due to the fact that the chief committee chair was out of the city on official business. Now, on my part, last week's session, when we had the caucus at the mayor's vice mayor's office, the problem with regards to this issue was given to me being the acting committee chairman on transportation. So I took it upon myself to present it to the meeting back in the office of a proposed ordinance, of which was on my head. When we resumed session, Honorable Remolio beat me on the first reading. I wasn't able to say it on record that what had happened. With regards to the proposed ordinance, which I see now on my table, this is the first time I saw this. Karoon lang nung puntuhan ako nakita. And Honorable Remolio, being a senior counselor compared to me, on his eighth year, ikaw ano po'y naboran siyang kunsiyang, so procedurally, kapod po si guro siya ang sao 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 na ordinance siya. Now, under the legislative, can I see the legislative toolkit, naman the legislative toolkit, there is a procedure on how to present an ordinance under that book of which we got from our PCL conferences. And it says there, if I leave a flash one, hi. Steps. Steps in making an ordinance, naabia analibuha, of which we should all follow. What are the procedural steps in enacting an ordinance or a resolution? The enactment involves 11 steps. So step one, a Sangguniang member or group of members fights with the secretary to the Sangguniang, which is authorized to see that two or three copies of the draft ordinance. So step one daan, wala pa si draft ordinance gi pakita. So, being the committee chair sa transportation, how could I discuss such ordinance? Naku na diri siya naabot ng nikiyawan sa atong secretary. So step one daan, sagit pa siya daan, wala pa siya draft ordinance gi prepare. So how, what will the committee take up? A blank piece of paper? Anyway, muna akong uan, Mr. Chairman, that is, there is a process in presenting an ordinance. And I assume, Honorable Remolio being eight years counselor, magisuit na ni siya, he should know those things. Mas bata, kuna ka bike pamala, or ri. He should know those things, that's my point lang ba. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Counselor Arbon, I recognize. Thirty minutes remain. We have to resolve this as soon as possible time. Ang ako lang hangyo is, saktong itong besote ni akong tokayo si Counselor Patrimonio nga let's try to resolve this and jointly, jointly consider the proposals. Ako wala namang problema, og dilim iabir sa second reading ang proposal ni Counselor Remolio. Although I would like to take exception nga, kana wala tayong madiskasan ba. Ako lang hangyo nga dilin na kita maginistrik tokayo sa mga rules, because last time, when our good friend Counselor Leon presented on first reading the draft proposal, I do not know if that was the same ordinance that is now also on our electronic copy. Ako po kumaino duma last time, na ato'y mga matrices, mga matrix ba. Karoon, wala namang kukakita. So I would assume na that's not, that's not the one. And if you really have to be very ticklish about it, we're supposed to sign our draft ordinances, and I'd like to know if also nasayahan ba putong draft ato? If you really have to be strict about it, no? But our internal rules say that it has to be signed. But apparently, most if not all of us in the city-county do not do that by acquiescence, nitubo trata, more so in this particular issue, because the exigency calls for it, that we had to agree as a matter of principle na to most part. But, okay, give and take, wala nagmay masabit na yong time on draft. It's because, nag-evolve magod siya because of the public hearings. That's why even the copies that my colleagues have in their possession now, napuguna siya corrected copy paggy, which we already submitted to the Secretariat. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, ato na lang siguro, dilin na lang kita maginistrikto sa ato ang rules. If there is a way, we can do away with those specific rules nga maka-restrain na hinua nato sa pagsulbala ni nga problema. Kung mahimo, ipresent na lang nato ang mga proposed solutions, and then we can be very informal about it. Atong kunin-kunitan, ang tutama konting to, and then we choose. Asa nagmay mas maayaw, asa ang ay ang atong tapukon, at taputon. Ako dilin po kumingon nga, buuyon na kita sa usaka opson kay basing complementary diagnosis nga ay strength ang proposal ni Counselor Remolio, napugay mga strength ang proposal ni Counselor Leon. So kung pwede, ato silang minyo on, mas maayutin ali. Ang hangyo lang, kay wak magod na apiin sa agenda na turon, if there's a way that we can consider on second reading the proposed amendment of Counselor Remolio, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, Counselor Leon?
With regards to the matrix, Mr. Chairman, it was just a presentation, a scenario. So, just a presentation na to.
Okay, Counselor Remo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make a manifestation, Mr. Chairman, that in the other matters of this afternoon's session, I'll be moving on first reading a proposed ordinance also, with regards to this. On the table, Mr. Chairman, are two beautiful ordinances. Dua ka guapo ang ordinance, ang guapo kayo. Listen to me, please listen to me. My proposed ordinance, Mr. Chairman, will be entitled, naranap ko ni pagwas, which ever is submitted to our secretary, submitted ready with a body, with a title. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance setting, a temporary fare rate scheme, while the permanent solution is being crafted for all MCHs flying within the territorial jurisdiction of Domagete City. This might be a bad age solution, Mr. Chairman, but I know dog atong kunin-kunitan pa na atong ordinance sa trip, basing maabtan pitang kilangabulan, ato mga pedicab drivers magulat, atong publiko magaulat. This is a temporary solution, this is the fastest solution. If we cannot reach a solution this afternoon. Salamat, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselor Ramon and Counselor Remolio.
I just would like to manifest, Mr. Chairman. I just received the hard copy of the proposed ordinance of Counselor Remolio. And my first question was, na committee meeting na ba siya? And then he said nga, last Monday, unta. Ang ako na po'y ika-comment, Mr. Chairman, kay during last January 26, I made myself available kay dun na may joint committee meetings with a committee of Ways and Means nga membro ko, as well as committee on traffic and transportation, pero wala jumib maglingkon sa table. So I just wonder why kay, ilip magod ang issue ka roon, supos to be na committee meeting unta me as a whole. So, unta to, ipatawak tanan kay, I also observed nga si Counselor Remolio, as well as Counselor Arbon, dihan rabot sa ilang cubicle, pero wala'y may tawag na mong tulog. Just an information, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Remolio.
At this point in time, Your Honor, we cannot be very strict on compliances, because that is going to be debatable, on whether it was or it was not complied with. Kita nakai-balo ang daghan na kayo mga itabok, nga na ay mga proposed ordinances, nawalan din ang matuman, pero tungkol kay mga buutan, magta mga punsiyang, magkasinaptanay ramta, atuang riya mukipadayon. Gani, Your Honor, I believe that this is not an ordinary circumstance and situation. This is something extraordinary, wherein an immediate solution is needed. Wala tamahadlo mga basin og na ay tingil pasada, kaya ko katuo nga dilin na buhaton sa tuang mga dibgo kay kabalo sila, makita na ninguha yon nga maabot na ni ningit tuha. Ang ako aling ikaabalakan, kigasigi og lames ang maong mga sumasakay, og ang mga driver sa pedicab. May nalanggaling kay kita, dumagitin niyo, city of gentle people, wala pingilad nga pagitabok. Baguholan ako na pamotan na, ang usapabuo ng driver, og siya, gani, na may siya diniin, gitalaganan siya, og pasahilo. Maunta to, kumbasihan sa size 50, makabayad unta to, og mga 80, 850. Gita gaan siyang singko, kumani talagan. Palang niyagud da, kay mo samot na, og kaliso na, iyan panginabue, imbes makapasakay sa blahing, inina. Ang problema karoon, Mr. Chairman, needs immediate solution.
May, may, Mr. Presiding Chair?
And as a reaction to the comments And as a reaction to the comments.
What is the preliminary para of councillor Sisnila?
Asa natatapit dron kay, urat, we are not moving at each.
Let us go back to the orders of the jury.
Let me finish, your honor, that I greatly appreciate the wisdom of honorable Nelson Patrimonyo. Kung mahimo, sumala sa dihangyo na sa ato ang Tinalangka, ABC Mayor, ni atong ni Aging Mircoles, pre ibang iuba na to. Gani, kaningo din siya, tuluto kabok ang version na agang honorable Leon, lahi tungka honorable Arbonne o sa akuah. Apan kay kami namang duhahoy na kasinabot, wala na nahimo nga imbes katung akoan ang first reading, na duhahoy kay ang amo ang ordinance sa gitipon man. So basihan na po ang isulti ni honorable Nelson Patrimonyo. Huwag po kima, bisikitang tanan ang utol ni ani, ang importante karoon ako na, maabot na tadayan o solution sa dakong problema.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Yes, councillor Patrimonyo. After hearing those good words coming from our different councillors, I move to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman, so that we can move.
Let us go back to the order today.
Our order? I move to the orders of the day, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, si katayong remarks, any objection? There being none, so this is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend the rules.
Let us go through the first committee reports before we going to the, our business for the day. Let us, update first our committee reports.
Committee on Transportation and Traffic, Committee on Ways and Means, subject an ordinance providing a modified computation of the fare rate adjustment scheme for all MCHs flying within the territorial jurisdiction of Dumaguete City. Action taken. The aforementioned proposal was jointly referred to the, to the Committee on Transportation and Traffic and the Committee on Ways and Means. In the course of action, the honorable members of both committees interpose no objection. Consequently, favorably endorses the same to the plenary and still open for further deliberation and modification while on second reading.
Yes, I'd like to move for the adoption of the committee report on the permanent records of this council. Second, to the second remarks. Councillor Remoyo, so good night.
May I inquire, your honor, that honorable Arbonne, on this humble representation, being authors of the said ordinance, while we were not invited to the committee meeting, so that we would have been able to present in total and in full our proposed ordinance? Because if we were not invited, there is no way that our proposed ordinance could be discussed. So that is a gross unfairness, your honor. Nakipagano namang data, kana ni proposed ordinance, approve on first reading, unanimously. Ngano wala mamigi patawang? Kay para matigaputan ni, basin pasiguro o samaong meeting kaga hapon, nagkaiusa na tadayon mga ato nalang ng usahon. Ngano ilahi mong diminduhan ni honorable Arbonne? Tungod ba kay kami aminurian, di mi appeal sa majority? Magalina namutan na kung ngano nga din is a calendar business, ang isulat din ni, second and third reading is given with a presumption that because the majority has the vote, ngamudah o na deksecond, usulat o third. Unta to makita na ko din, it's only second reading, o naprobahan ato, then we could propose that we are going to go into third reading. It does not have to be made mention, but second and third reading.
Atol ya, councillor Remoyo, you are not invited of the committee meeting because during the consideration of the first reading of the proposed ordinance of councilman, it does refer to the proper committee. The Committee on Ways and Means, the Committee on Rules, and the Committee on Transportation and Traffic City. So there was no mention about the committee or others committee.
Your honor, I beg to disagree because you are going to look at our summary of the minutes of last session, January 21, last Wednesday, on item number six, first reading and referral. Claro kay di do, corollary thereto, after it was unanimously approved, refer the aforementioned proposed ordinance to the Committee on Transportation and Traffic and Committee on Rules Ordinance and Legal Matters. Move on, Remoyo, second Imbo. So this was referred to the committees. Ang problema, kay wala di take up. Pagkita na nila, wala namigi appeal.
Okay, so we have any remarks of the committee reports?
Comment, urat?
Yes, councillor Sisnila.
Appeal ng one's discussion, Mr. President, Chair. Understandably, naamangod kay procedural rules na ato i-comply. Now, kung dili ta mo complyan ang atong mga procedural rules, muni may tabo. It's the comment of councillor Remoyo against the comment of another councillor. If, if ako alang, if nihatag lang unta si councillor Remoyo sa iyang written formal offer sa iyang proposed ordinance, then ma-take up na unta. Ang problema manggo, karoon, ipaapas lang iyang proposed ordinance, karoon rapo dalin ako nabasa, wa dalin ako nabasa tarong, then putting the grave of the committee. How could that be? Anya, they are asking for leniency to, kuwan, dili kay i-implement strictly ang ato ang internal rules. Di gubot ang may tabo. Now, let's put, spade, spade, blank, blank, white, white. Now, if we are, if we are to arrive at a solution, then let's follow the minimum rules, procedural rules, karoon, order na ato ang discussion. Karoon, wa, but, it's already treated, treated, wala, matakasugod, tungod ani.
So let us, the report issue, no? Let us act and act decisively. Because there is, there is the, there is the whole Dumaguete fairness, the writing, packing, and the pedicab drivers impatient of our actions. So ato ding, decision na lang ako na. May I move that we? Okay, any other remarks? The committee report? There being none, so the committee report is adopted. Okay, let's proceed to the next item. Now, let us consider first the persuasion of councillor Remoyo. Whether or not the proposed ordinance of councillor Remoyo and councillor Arbonne should be included in the determination and the consideration of the basic authority. So, the chair would like to know, na ato baga appeal ang ka Remoyo, ka Arbonne, o ka? So, may ipagpropos question, Mr. Chairman? Yes, councillor Imbo.
The proposal of honorable Remoyo and honorable Arbonne, karoon pa ko kita, dirisa akong lamisa pagsulod, dirisa among sa atong sessionol, diriga ka patong sa among lamisa. Karoon, pagi, papagigong kabasaan eh.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, kunya. The proper procedure, Mr. Chairman, is what we have, is what we have said is that this should have been submitted earlier para na matunan, madiscuss. Karoon, if we discuss this and marry this together with the proposal of honorable Leon, some ni shotgun marriage? So that we could have a solution, an immediate solution? We should have a solution of the problem that we are not rushed to. Dili ta mag, dili ta maghimong usakan decision kay tungod kay magdalita. Magdalita, that is my call, Mr. Chairman. We should be careful with our crafting of our ordinances.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, councillor Arbonne.
As I stated earlier and I pleaded, if we can just not be very, very strict with the rules, without your respect, sir, this is not a shotgun marriage. We're just proposing, can be rejected. In the same manner that we cannot also consent immediately to an invisible spouse in the case of your proposed ordinance where we haven't even seen it yet, right? And it project man sa other matters, in which case it will take us another time, right? That's why I suggested.
I am moving my ordinance on first reading.
Exactly, sir.
Yes, and I will be passing it to the committee and maybe on next session we can agree on second reading.
Exactly, sir, that's my point. My point is that if we are going to treat that as another option, no problem, but then we will be prolonging again. That's why I suggested earlier, in fact, I'm all for it. You can move it, we can dispense with the first, second, third reading. We can agree as a whole that we treat your option also as one of those that we have to agree on. Para na'tay decision karoon. So, kay otherwise, mo kuwan pa ta, without your respect, Mr. Chairman, nindok man ang suggestion ni councillor Imbo, but then it will take us another time, another timeframe, maybe one week more, two weeks more. Because I believe it cannot take precedence over the proposal also of councillor Remoyo. So if we have to go by precedence, unaon kadangan ng proposal after ano, Tony Remoyo na po, after ano, councillor Imbo. And then you think, tila na po nakawilis mahorod? If you have this time now, atong kuwan tanan, diskasya na kuwan tanan, ang three options. And we can maybe, at least in principle, makabaluta ka na, ato ng kuwan ka na, ang i-reject, ani atong supayon, and then we will leave it to the secretary to refine everything and come up with a.
May I know of the members' proposal? With regards to the proposal of councillor Arbonne. Whether you are amenable of the proposition?
May I, sir, chairman? That is, I would like to reiterate again, Mr. Chairman, that after councillor Remoyo delivered privileged speech, this humble presentation suggested that if we could have the the two resolution of councillor Remoyo and councillor Leon na merge jointly, ato mapiliyan, then, and also the ordinance of councillor Imbo, which this kind of ordinance according to him is a ban-aid ordinance. So if there is a ban-aid ordinance, probably both ordinance of councillor Remoyo and councillor Leon are salumpas in this matter. So we will, one, we will want this together so that there is a solution, Mr. Chairman. Then let me finish first, let me finish. Yeah, the general public is waiting for the solution because even the tricycle drivers are general public, in service, Mr. Chairman. So they are citizens of Dumaguete, so everybody is waiting for this. So why not merge together, na ato may intermarriage? Both ordinances of the three gentlemen, so that we can find a solution. As I would like to say again, we are here representing the voice of the people as part of the solution. We are here, not here, because we are part of the problem.
Here, please, Mr. Chairman. Yes, councillor Sisnila.
As chairman of the traffic and transportation, with the indulgence of the members of the council, during the crisis, I was sick with flu, until now I have still cough and colds. Yeah, the presentation of councillor Remoyo, as I have peruse, is very good. Excellently discussed here. The presentation of councillor Leon, of course, with complete committee reports, is also excellently presented. And I also appreciate the proposal of councillor Imbo. But right now, as I analyze the two, it cannot be merged automatically. Because the councillor Remoyo discusses, the proposed ordinance discusses on daily wage rate, average daily MCH rental, average daily gasoline usage. While that of councillor Leon, the computation is anchored on the average price of basic prime commodity rise, which is the baseline in the computation of basic fare rate. At the time that there is a need to review and adjust the basic, which is fair. So as of now, even if we discuss this intelligently, we cannot join. We cannot join. That's my observation, your honor.
Thank you very much, councillor Sisnila. Councillor Imbo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In my ordinance, I don't want to get, to be involved with the love affair of the Remoyo ordinance, the and the Leon ordinance. I appreciate both ordinances. Muna, sa ato ang proposal, Mr. Chairman, is that we need a solution. But if there marries, na ato siya, na ato siya i-unite, kinarasan na ato siya idiscuss pagayo. Anya, ang atong mga pedicab drivers, ang atong riding public, magulat, magsigitag, discuss yon, dili, magsigitag ahoy, magsigitag because of that intermarriage, intercan, how to merge that? Our riding public and our tricycle sectors are waiting. Ang akong proposal, it is, walang pa rin, on first reading pa rin, I don't know if you want to take this, will be a temporary scheme while waiting for you to get married. O kusin, while waiting for you to, but na sa tay solution. Hanong kanan ating permanente nga, nga solution, kaning ako, mawala, ani. This is, if you pull it at, ban-aid solution, sige na, okay lang. Basta kay, dun na tay solution, karoon, makhatag na sa ato riding public, magdiscuss, kaning siya patulo, pakabulan, basta na na tay solution, urat, ako, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Yes, councillor Arbonne.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's already 3:30. Papagitan na kalinok. I think it's time to look at, po, kung kusay gi propose the honorable Leon, so that we can compare, makasugod na, because ang atong tumungo, tuyo, ni hingatanan, is para man sa to ang riding public o para sa to ang motorcycle.
Okay, let's proceed to the unfinished business.
Sa ato naming naon?
Councillor Remoyo.
Thank you very much. I was just advised by my, the main author of the proposed ordinance, honorable Manny Arbonne, that I will not anymore entertain all other remarks to the point that I will not even make mention anymore that all ordinances are supposed to have permanency.
Wala pa kay na kita ordinance ang temporary sa niya, kay ato niya ni usbot, no? All ordinances must be permanent, and if there are any changes, then you make amendments.
So, Mr. Chairman, after hearing that, Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend the rules so that we can recognize the. Let us, let the unfinished business item number one. So that we can go.
Unfinished business, one, the second reading, the second and third readings of the proposed ordinance entitled an ordinance providing a modified computation of the fare rate adjustment scheme for all MCHs flying within the territorial jurisdiction of Dumaguete City at instance of councillor Danilo Tiliyon sponsored.
Gentlemen from barangay Magnowis, Dumaguete City, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Before I proceed to discussing the ordinance, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present to the party the result of the survey. If you remember last Monday, if you remember last Monday, this party approved to have a survey for the reason of having data. So we would have data considered in discussing the solution. Now, naanatay results and, and with the results, I am not the proper person to explain it because dili ko ma isa statistics. And if somebody from the gallery ask me a question with regards to the results, I cannot definitely answer. So first, I would like to present, that's why I invited our guest for today by the person of doctor Craig Refugio. Our guest for today is doctor Craig Andrew Fugio.
Assistant in graduate school.
Yes, assistant in graduate school in Norso, Dumaguete City. His PhD, he got in the research and evaluation in the University of San Carlos last 2004. He is a postgraduate in statistics at the University of North Carolina, USA, and laboristic training in the National Labor Institute in India. And he is a director for international research and linkages in Norso. So for me, he is the best person to interpret our data that we gathered during yesterday's quick survey. By the way, it was done with our staff and they went all over Dumaguete City in different paragais, in different schools, and they worked hard on it. Respondents, this is the results, Mr. Chairman, results. There was a total of three link kay ni Ropatiyan, kay resulta namani. Wala may nakabuluhan yon niya tanan. Nasa mga results. Nasa mga results. Dina mo, dina mo, dina mo, dina. Kala, kala mo na results. Anyway, there were three questions filled in among the public. Simple na kainin question. Pilaman ang dapat na minimum fare rate or pretahan karoon iubos ang presyo sa kasulina. There was a selection of six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Number two question, pilaman ang dapat na pretahan kung siya kausikwid ng kasulina. And number three, pilaman ang dapat na pretahan kung iubos ang pachinko ang kasulina. So very simple na kayo. And the winner for the first question was number letter B. A total respondents of 796. 796 respondents total na ni participates in the survey. Ang nakatao sa first question was numbers letter B, which is seven pesos, with a total of 165 points na ni pabor. And also 208 points or persons na ni pabor. Ang nuyb is 17, and size 101, and J5. Muna si result sa survey, ng muna i-explain, Doctor Refugio, para po nakasabuta, kunsa i-scientific study with regards to statistical survey. So may move to suspend the rules, Mr. Chair, so that we can give the floor to Doctor Refugio to explain to us scientifically what this means.
Resilient.
Sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I got it, Mr. Arbon.
Before we suspend the rules, Mr. Chair, I just would like to be clarified with the proponent regarding this particular survey, because he wants our good guest to answer questions pertaining to this survey, and the word he used was scientific. But we know that this was not a scientific survey. So I do not know if our good guest would would really be able to answer questions pertaining to this, because he wasn't even part of that survey. But anyway, for, and for everyone's enlightenment, I just want us to bear that in mind, that this was not a scientific survey.
Okay, let us listen first, the owner, the guest.
I would find it grossly unfair to our guest if he will be subjected to something of which, at the very start, he was not part and parcel to. Because I would have appreciated it, him, our guest, Doctor Refugio, who is an expert on statistics, would have been included from the very start. Kaya arita magsugod sa ulahi, maglisod sa ulahi. In fact, we ma-flash na'to ang kitong survey, the survey form, you have a copy of the survey form? Copy of the survey form. Makita na'to sa survey form. Ngana ay letter F, mamutan ang tabo, kunsa ni tabo sa letter F, la, A, B, C, D, E na malamay gi, abil, hayan mga letter F, wala yun sila ta.
Okay, Councilor Tiliyon.
Yes, ang, ang letter F, lang po na siya, Mr. Chair, kaya maybe ang mismong respondent, napo siya, yun, mawilingong sila.
Ah, sige, listen first, the owner invited you.
No, no, muna nga ni Arbon, muna, kala, karoon, nakasabut tabo ngayon ay letter F, kasi nga siya ni kasugot. So kunsa iresulta yun taong sa letter F, kasi nga siya ni obdito ang letter F. Sana subta, siya.
Listen first, the owner.
Anyway, Mr. Chair, I explained to our guest ang, ang, muna ni tabo, and he gladly told me, I will help explain it.
Okay, the rules is suspended?
Yes, Doctor, you have the floor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mike. Let me start with the statement of Councilor Remolio. Yes, I would say also that I was not part of the survey, and in the statistical process, the statistician should be part of the development of the survey questionnaire. But what I'm doing in here is that I would go into the data given to me in the assumption that the questionnaire was being was being presented to this body for validation or maybe for further questioning of this body. And I would also comment on what you said, that the last part in there is about the letter that has no, no, no value at all. Actually, in the data collection, there must be others places specified. Because sometimes we could not read, we might be thinking of, shall we say, different values, but there are values that may not pop up to our mind during the development of the survey questionnaire. But in here, I would just go into the data that are being given to me. So, according to the secretary, they conducted a survey for around 796. And I presume that the data given to me were accurate and being collected to the best of the ability of the data collectors. And my role is upon the data analysis. For the, you can see the Microsoft Excel. You can find in there 7.20, which we call the average or the mean of the 796, as being distributed for six, seven, eight, nine, and then ten. And then, in statistics, we have to add all 796 responses and divide it by 796. So if we run upon in the data analysis of Microsoft Excel, we have 7.20 as the average of the survey data. And then, it has a confidence level of 95%, that is 0.05. Because if you are going to have a data collection, then we're not so sure that that one 7.20 is actually the exact figure of the total number of people here in Dumaguete City. If we follow statistical process, the total number of required respondents is 157 in the assumption that we use 95% confidence level, a standard deviation of 2, and an estimated error of 5%. And since it has 796, so it exceeds the minimum required sample of 157. So basically, if we follow statistical theory, if we look into the entire population where the survey sample was taken, it would range from 7 pesos and 15 centavos up to 7 pesos and 25 centavos. Because we have an error of 0.05, that's our chance error. So we have to deduct that one from 7.20, and then add that one to 7.20 to come up with this range. So based on the result of the survey, I would say 7.15 to 7.25 as if we figure out the entire, the entire people of Dumaguete City talking about that survey. And then, fortunately, I was in India last year, and then when I came back, I was actually working on a paper about the lives of pedicab drivers on quantitative and qualitative analysis. And I even brought some of the findings of my students in there on what is the profile of the pedicab drivers. So I, in one of the questions that I did in the survey, I was able to ask on the income per day of the pedicab drivers. And my data collectors were my graduate students taking master's program and doctoring program at Norso. And that was conducted September and October 2014. And that is the average, 371.16 net income per day. And then, there is a confidence interval of 95%, so we have 38.49. So on average, we have 332.67 to 409.65 pesos as the net income when we conducted the survey way back September to October. So if we generalize that one to the pedicab drivers in the assumption that there was correctness in our data collection, the pedicab drivers had this income way back September to October, 332.67 to 409.165. This is the, actually, this is the result of the survey presented to me by the secretary of Councilor Leon. And then, that is up to 796. And then, I have in there gas per liter in December to January 2014, then 2015. Because they provided to me data from gasoline stations about the gas per liter. So the mean is 40 for December 2014, and then January 2015. And we have a confidence level of 1.88, but more or less, we have 40 on average, from January and December. That's actually the income that we have collected from the pedicab drivers way back 2014 and 2014, September and October. So that's the data that we have. So if you look at that one, September and then October, 2014, the average of gas per liter is 51 pesos and 24 centavos. For December and January 2015, it goes down to 41.77. I just have considered December and January, September and October in relation to my study that I have previously conducted. And we're able to have also the average of price per liter, starting from January down to December 2014, and we have also partial list for January 2015. And this one is actually a combination of the gasoline per liter for different days in January, in 2014 up to December. And for January 2014 to December 2014, the average is 51.86. That was 2014. And then, for January, the average that we have taken from the data is 38 pesos and 20 centavos. Looking at the average for the entire fiscal year 2014, and for the month of January, we have 38.20. But we go from December, the last one in there is 40.97. And then, for January, we have 40.02, we have 38.32, 37.07, 37.37, and that gives an average of 38.20. So with the data that I have, there is this, this one is from the study that I have conducted correlation with what is being presented to me. September, October, we have 371.16 based on the survey that I have conducted, and I have supporting documents down there. And then, the gas per liter in these two months was 51.24 as the average. And then, December, January, we do not know the exact income of the pedicab drivers, but we know that the average is 39.96. So if you look at these two figures, we have 371, 51.24, we have 39.96. There's a decrease of the gas per liter, but it does not follow that there would be a decrease also of the income. Because our assumption, there's no increase of the rent to the operator. So basically, with this given figure, with the decrease of the gas per liter, there would be an increase also of the income. Assuming aside some other factors, but looking into the perspective of the income and then the gas per liter. So this one, I could not compute, because this is not linear, we could not apply ratio and proportion. But what I would say, that if this one decreases, then the income would increase, assuming that there is no increase on the rent to the operator. So if you look at the graph of the prices of the gasoline from January up to this month, January 2015, you would notice that there is what we call a fluctuating value, fluctuating values of the prices. And the big graph is somewhere in September down to January this month. So if we look into the five-month average of the gas per liter, January of 2014 down to December 2014, and then January 2015. So these are the corresponding average prices. And the big graph is this month, January 38.2. So I am able to come up with this kind of computation. Month, December 2015, the average price per liter 41.73. And then, the fare is 8.50, as what is being given to me, 8.50, as approved by this body also. And then, January 2015, the average is 38.20, so there is a decrease. And the decrease is 3.53. If we compare that one in terms of percent, we have 8.46% as the decrease of the average of price per liter. So for the fare review, so we have 8 pesos and 50 centavos. And the proposed is 7 pesos and 78 centavos. How did I get this one? We have 8.5 times 8, 8.46% of 8.5, and that will give you 0.72. Because the decrease, if we're going to look at that one linearly, we do have, the decrease of this is 8.46. So I presume that there would be an 8.46 decrease also of the fare. So looking at that, 8.5 times 8.46, that will give 0.72. So the reduction would be 0 times 72, or 72 centavos. So that will give 0.72. So, that will give 0.72. That is the computation based on average prices of the gasoline. But based on the survey provided also, we have this result. Proposed, 7.25, because as I mentioned earlier, it ranges from 7.50 to 7.25. So, we have 7.25 as the result of the survey. This normally is not to be saved, but we have to look at the maximum value. The range is 7.50 to 7.25, then we look at the maximum value, so 7.25. So, average price per liter result, 7.78. That's based on the computation of average prices and then this one based on the survey. And in some countries, like in India, when they did also a presentation, that different surveys were conducted. What they normally did at the National Labor Institute in India is that they average all results. So, if we look into the survey side and we look into the average prices, we have 7.52 as the computation. So, 7 pesos and 52, and that would come from the survey result and that would come from the data on average prices of gasoline per liter.
Okay. So, thank you very much, Dr. Refugio. Yes, Senator Arbon, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions for Dr. Refugio.
Go ahead, Commissioner Arbon.
Doctor? Go on. I'm going to frame my query on your study in relation to the informal survey that the city council did a few days ago. In your study, I think the timeframe was from... What period did you cover, sir?
September and October of 2014.
Do you have data that would cover a 12-month cycle?
The other thing is, I have only the two-month period. Because actually, it was an initial study of the proposed study that I would be having by next year.
Good. Because what you just presented to us is an eye-opener, at least as far as I'm concerned. Although I would have desired to see a longer period covered because we know that during summer, fewer students, fewer passengers. And during the peak season in December, more passengers, more bonuses, more travels. And so, possibly, pedicab drivers also increase their income every day.
Exactly.
So, but nevertheless, your study is very, very good. Because now, as far as I'm concerned, I have a working idea of at least the take-home pay of a pedicab driver given a two- or three-month period. Okay? Now, to the second point. We know that the survey that the council did was not really scientific. Because we do not know how many pedicab drivers in fact were able to participate and what is the sampling size. And per sector that was asked, how many members thereof were asked. So, in other words, because it was not scientific, we cannot say with high confidence that the answers given were really representative of a cross-section of Dumaguete City, right?
Yes, sir. In terms of the cross-section, I did not look into the cross-sectioning of the data being collected or how the survey was conducted. But in terms of the sample size, as I said earlier, we do have also infinite population, or sometimes, we don't know the population. But we have some formulas in statistics on how we are going to calculate the sample size. So, my presumption in there is that when we consider a 95% confidence level and given that the standard deviation is forward, meaning the variation of all respondents is forward and the standard error is also 5%, because we have 95%, automatically, the error in there for chances is 5%. So, basically, it's only approximately 1.57. So, looking at the sample size, 796 is much higher than the minimum sample size. The only thing that I would say is that in your statement earlier, on the cross-sectioning of the 796.
Yes, sir. My last point, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I raise that particular comment, Mr. Chairman, is that, again, we have to bear in mind that our study, though helpful, really was not scientific. And I have already heard comments that they were not asked, they did not see people in their area asking about this question. In short, there will always be people who will say... But we have to laud Dr. Refugio because he tried to synthesize the data gathered by our very dedicated staff and try to come up with a solution to the problem that is pressing us right this very moment. My only concern, Mr. Chairman, is that will the council take hook, line, and sinker the data that were already gathered by the staff as the, in quotation marks, "the gospel truth" about the sentiment of the people? I appreciate very much the disclaimer of Dr. Craig that he only worked on the assumption that this was actually properly procured. I mean, the data given to him were properly procured. So, thank you very much, sir. And to your students.
Senator LaYot is circulating.
Yes, there was a presentation in regards to the areas. The SCU, Bantayan, Munyao, SLS Terminal, Robinsons, FU, SPU students and parents, City Hall compound, employees, transacting public, public market areas, Perdis Street, Lead Plaza to SCU, MCH drivers, SLS Terminal, Lead to SCU, Rowing. Could this represent cross-section? With regards to the question of honorable Arbon, can any of my areas? He was asking about cross-section. My doctor, if this would represent...
When we talk about the cross-section, I'm not from Dumaguete. I'm from Mitanau, I'm from Dipolok. And I'm not so familiar with the entire areas in Dumaguete. And then, reading the result of my initial study, I don't have any idea on how many pedicab drivers in Dumaguete City and what are the different organizations of the pedicab drivers. So, basically, if you're going to ask me about cross-sectioning on the area of Dumaguete, I could not say anything about it, knowing that this is still my third year of staying in Dumaguete.
Okay, Commissioner Linia.
Thank you, Mr. President, Chair. I would like to, Doctor, I would like to focus my query on the arrival of a more scientific formula regarding this matter. There was mention of the average daily income of pedicab driver between 300 to 400, of which it was also confirmed by one of the pedicab drivers during the public hearing that it is within those range. Now, whether we will be using the existing ordinance as well as the proposed ordinance of my colleague, could you give us or suggest a formula or the data that we should be needing to arrive at the more scientific and reflective arrival of a fare rate? What would be the data that you would be needing in case, again, we will be confronted with this predicament?
Since, in terms of income, it's only a two-month period survey. And there was a statement also, like December, there is an increase. So, it might not be true what we have taken in September and October may not be true in December because it's a peak season. So, the range of the incomes of the pedicab drivers in there would not be appropriate for December because I had only a data collected for a two-month period. So, if we have actually a source of data where we could see the income, the estimated income way back January up to December, a one-month cycle, then it would be better to have an average on the income of the pedicab drivers, segregating also the peak season and the non-peak season. Because if you're going to have that one combined together, then there is what we call an issue of outliers in statistics, that having a very large income would also affect the average. So, we can separate that one, income for peak season and income for non-peak season. Like in Dumaguete, if shall we say it's a semester break, then, Dumaguete is mino kaayo as I see that one with my three years of staying here. So, the pedicab driver, I would presume that the income would also decrease. But in terms of regular semesters and then December, peak season, then the income would also increase. So, one of the limitations in there that I would say, September and October, it's still a class month, September and October. So, basically, the income is, I would say, accurate in the assumption that students of mine in the graduate school collected that one honestly. And then, based on your query, it would be much more better that we have data in a one-year cycle, segregating that one between peak season and non-peak season. And for students also, we can segregate that one as to school months or the vacation months or even summer period. And then, looking into the price of the gas per liter, we do have a data for that. So, I guess we can make use of that one. And in my presentation, I used that one as the gauge on the decrease of the price of the gas per liter, looking into that data from 40 down to 30 plus. So, if there is a decrease in there, then we have to satisfy, I guess, based on the survey and based on the data that we have in terms of the prices of the gases. So that we can merge, as I listened earlier, it mentions about a merge between two things. And that's what India is also doing. The different, shall we say, proponents, they presented their results and then they averaged the results to come up with a holistic decision.
Follow-up, Commissioner Linia.
You know, Doctor, if, just to update you of the past discussions that this council had, one of the dilemma that we are confronted is the pedicab drivers are clamoring that despite the reduction of gas, pump gas price, the basic commodities, the price of the basic commodities are still the same. Now, I would like to discuss a formula and a long-term solution, of which, again, we have already discussed the income, the price. There was one suggestion coming from, which was being offered in the council of looking into consideration the inflation rate, of which I would subscribe to that idea, considering that the inflation rate talks about the purchasing power of the peso. Now, would you suggest to include also in our data in the formulation of a formula of arriving a reflective fare rate?
If we talk about indices in a national perspective and if we compare that one in the scenario of Dumaguete, then Dumaguete is just very small in comparison to national figures. So, if we look into figures given by NSO and given by government offices like GMP, Consumer Price Index, then that's all about the national scenario, it's a national figure. But we are looking into a micro level. So, in my own perspective, because I just did the analysis last night, and then, I would say that, looking at the national figures, for me, looking at the issue for pedicab drivers, I would say that data that we would get from there, I think, I'm not so sure, I would not say an exact word, but I'm not so sure if it would have a direct bearing on the local scenario of Dumaguete. Because the figure that we would see in terms of inflation rate is a national figure. And comparing Dumaguete to the national scenario is totally different. And if we apply that one in terms of correlation, there are many factors that would affect, like the pedicab drivers, they would say also, as I heard, they would say that there's a decrease of the price of gasoline per liter, but the basic commodities, that the prices of the basic commodities are not decreasing. But if you look up into, we're talking about the figures for the gasoline and for the fares, now from 8.50 down to a certain value. And in terms of the gasoline, we have in there 40... 41.7338.2 way back to December. And if you look at the graph, we did have 40, we have 52, down to 38. So, basically, we have 38, or as of yesterday, we have 38.37, I guess. So, if you look at the decrease of the gasoline, there's a very big decrease of the gasoline. But if you look at the decrease of the fare, it's only if you go, for example, from 8 pesos and 50 cents down to 6 pesos and 50 cents. It's a 2 peso decrease. And the decrease is very small. The decrease of the gas per liter is quite big. So, there is no proportionality in that case. And knowing the fact that there's no increase also of the rent to the operator. But yes, we understand that one, even our case, fixed earners, we know that the gasoline decreases, but our wage does not increase also. And still, the prices, we know pretty well that the prices are still in there. The prices don't go down. So, similar to that case. Now, if we look at the graph in there, there's a big drop going to January. So, I think the survey, if I would say, I presume that data were collected according to the best of the ability of the data collectors. And then, knowing also the averages of the prices of the gas for a one-year cycle, if we merge that one together, 7 pesos and 52, and then, looking into statistics, sometimes, we're out of the valley, so we can have 8 pesos also. So, I think in my own perspective, a 1 peso, a 50 cents decrease of the fare would be okay. And setting aside your question, sir, on the validity of the data collection and the cross-sectioning of the data. But looking into the perspective, I presume the data were collected to the best of the ability of the data collectors and the one that formulated the questionnaire, then I would say, the merge of the two, based on the survey and based on the average, yes, 7.52 would say it's based on the survey and based also on the average. 7.52 would say it's based on the survey and based also on the average of the prices. In my perspective, but I set aside about some of the technical terms in economics, because I'm not an economist, I just look at the issue in a statistical perspective.
By way of my capture, Doc, as a statistician, what you will be needing is the income on a 12-month period, as well as the price of gas, that's all you need? To arrive on a, what you call this, reflective?
And then checking that one also, checking that one also with, because sometimes when we have the data, we have to validate that one also with the pedicab drivers. Or whether, like what you said, the figure that I presented a while ago would match also to one of the consultative meetings that you did in the past. And that's what we are going to do also, whether it is actually based on what's going on with the lives of the pedicab drivers.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Consulor Imbo, and then, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Doc, for coming and for giving such a wonderful input. Doc, I would just like to ask a question with regards to your presentation. Heitz, could you go back to the previous slide? Considering, Doc, that there was no survey done, you were saying that, no, no, kabalig na Heitz, kataro Heitz, that one, that one, that one. Considering that there is no survey done, and you were saying that...
That's 7...
That the 7.78...
7.78 is the supposedly fare due to the reduction of the gas?
Yes, sir. Do you understand it that way?
Yes, sir. Because I look at that one linearly, because sometimes data are called be linear, but I just look at that one linearly. If there's a decrease of the price per liter of the gasoline, then there would be decrease also of the fare. But setting aside the decrease of the price of the commodities, because they are not directly correlated, actually. It would take a long process to decrease the prices of the commodities. But looking into the decrease of the gas per liter, it would directly follow, there would be a decrease also of the fare, but based on a ratio and proportion basis.
So, you are saying, Doc, that this is the rate based on ratio and proportion, muni idiegris, kakaayong idiegris, the fare should have decreased only that much?
Yes, sir. Looking into the average of December 2014, we have 41.73. That one, 41.73. January 2015, the average is 38.2, because there's an increase, then rollback, then increase, rollback, and we get the average. So, the average decrease is 8.46%. So, if you look at that one linearly, on what would happen to the fare also? So, the current is 8.5. And then, if we have a decrease of 8.46, then there should also be a decrease of the fare by 8.46. If we look at that one linearly. And I don't look at that one in terms of other factors. I look at on two factors, like the gas per liter and the fare, the current and what will be the prevailing fare. So, it would be 7.78, a decrease only of 72 centavos. 72 centavos.
Okay, end of gaya. Yes, ato sa'na ni Bolio?
Thank you very much. Again, thank you.
Mura sana gaya ang mga pedicab drivers?
Have we then, we met yesterday's survey was not scientific? Are we agreed on that one, that yesterday's survey was not scientific? Not to mention your survey, which of course was excellently done, but we are making that yesterday's survey was not scientific. Yes or no would be surprise?
I would not say also, no, I would not say yes also. Because, I would say it's scientific, I would say it's not, because first, in terms of the designing of the questionnaire, me as a statistician, I should be part of the designing of the questionnaire.
Thank you very much.
And then, for that case, the issue in there is, in terms of sample size, it's okay. But what I have in mind is on the cross-sectioning. On the cross-sectioning. And we do have also the concept of randomization. When we conduct a survey, we have to apply a randomization. Not in the case, when I go into the field, if I were the data collector, then I would say, ah, siya ako interviewon, ah, siya ako interviewon. But we have to do it randomly. And why we are going to do that one randomly? Because events in this world are probabilistic. Like, the prices that we have are fluctuating, but based on a lot of uncertainties. So, when we conduct the survey, we have to apply also randomization. I'm not so sure about how it was conducted, so I would presume that it's actually conducted to the best of the abilities. But I would not comment about, so partially, I would say, maybe it's conducted scientifically, or maybe it's not, because I just look at the database on what I have presented and on the cross-sectioning that are being given in there. So that...
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr....
But even if there's a question about scientific or not, scientific or not, in the perspective also of robust statistics, that will give also an idea on what is the voice of the people. At least, you have the idea in there on what they like. Looking into scientific or not, but in my perspective, it gives an idea on what is actually the voice of the people. But scientific and scientific, I would not say yes or no.
So, in short, you cannot categorically say whether it is scientific and whether it is cross-sectional, it is a yes or a no to the point that it is maybe? Yes, maybe, no? Final question, Doctor. Would the number of respondents, which I believe numbers to, it is 796? 796. Would that be reflective of the average number of the riding public of the city of Dumaguete?
This is the concept in statistics, we go into large population. But if we go into large population, it does not mean also that we go into large sample. There is one particular case, even if the population is so large, but we only have a minimum standards for the sample. Like in that case, if we set 95% confidence level and our chance error is 5%, because it's complementary. If you say 95% confidence level and 5% is automatic for the chance error, and then going into a four variance or a two standard deviation. The minimum sample is only 157. And then, why I set that one as our standard deviation is 4? Because if I look at the data presented, it starts with 6, 7, 8, 9, and then 10. So, if you look into the difference, on average, it's 2. So, the variation is 4, actually. So, when we plug in that one into the formula in statistics on how to get the sample size, it would give 157. And that's the minimum sample to get a 95% accuracy.
Thank you very much.
But that's only in the assumption that data were actually collected to the best of the ability of the researchers, and then there was randomization, and everything in the questionnaire was proper and was being validated by the proponents of the research.
So, as you said, usi kayo walang maapealanay so that it would have become scientific, and then you would have been able to advise on it being cross-sectional. And also, to the number of respondents so that it could be able to reflect the average riding public number. And based on your analysis on the data given to you, and combined with your data and statistics done on a study last year, on September, October, that the basic fare rate should be at 7.52?
Yes, sir, 7.52.
7.52. So, if you're going to round it off to the nearest, it should be 7.50?
Yeah, 7.50.
7.50, okay. Would you also be able to see, which I don't think so, because we do not have there the age bracket to the respondents who are senior citizens, respondents who are students. So, basically, that aspect in the data gathering was not also included, because I would presume that if you were included in data gathering, that would also have been one of the main points that you would have considered?
Yes, sir, because as I said earlier, in terms of cross-sectioning, I'm not into that geographical areas. But looking into characteristics of the people in here, then I would say, I would include the senior citizens as part of the segregation of the total respondents.
Were you able also to include in your data statistics the price of rice, which is the basic commodity that we see in the ordinance of Consular Dalo?
Actually, I have the data for the price of rice, but I'm not able to finish the analysis of the prices, knowing that I started last night and then today. So, I still have work also at Norsu, so I was not able to finish that one. But I do have data also for the basic commodities. And the prices of the basic commodities would also be a factor.
Would it also be important if you'd be able to factor in the basic minimum wage based on the DOL, Department of Labor and Employment, which is PEC 310? Would it also be important to include in your data and statistics if you're going to put in and factor in the average daily rental of the pedicab units?
I fix the right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, less comments. Less comments, okay. Consulor Ivan.
I have here a letter from a friend, and I suppose Dr. Refugio knows him also. Mr. Millard Mamhot, I believe he's also a mathematician. And he also had certain assumptions. And what he discovered in his assumptions, more or less, Millard's also what you presented a while ago. In his analysis, Mr. Chairman, with the reduction in the fuel price and fare rate remaining at 8.50, there would be a take-home pay increase, oumentos, income drivers by about 19%. Okay? But he had some assumptions also like you did. Insofar as the survey conducted by the council is concerned. My query, however, Dr. Refugio, is that I noticed in your last survey, not the city council survey, you have indicated by a columnar graph, the fluctuation in the fuel prices. Can we take a look at that again? The blue bars or columns? And I noticed that, actually, that one, thank you. I noticed that, actually, starting August of last year yet, there was already a decline in the monthly price of gasoline. Such that, sugod agosto, hangod isyembre 2014, nimaba na from 52 pesos to 41.73. Mu imo i-factor apin ang January 2015, na ulo na sa' 38.2. So, from August, in a six-month period, the price, the average price of gasoline in Dumaguete City decreased by more or less 26? Am I correct? 52 pesos minus 38 would give us a difference of how much? 26?
Around 70.
24?
From August, August is from 52 down to January.
About 24?
That's around 12, around 15.
14, 15?
15? Yeah, around 15, because we have 52, then we have 30. So, 12 plus, around 14.
Okay. So, the decrease ya of mga 14...
15, yes, sir.
14 or 15 pesos on average. In your survey, sir, were you able to gather information as to how many hours a pedicab driver lives the streets of Dumaguete?
Yeah, I have actually in the data that I have in there, but I'm not able to present that one. But that is just for a two-month period, way back September, mid-October.
Yeah, but I'm more or less on the regular period of the year, right? When it's not peak season, it's also not peak season.
That's why I said earlier, it would be better to segregate the data as to peak season or non-peak season.
If you would be willing to share that data with us, sir, perhaps, we will be further aided. Because in the assumptions of Dr. Mamhot, he also put there the number of hours that a pedicab driver uses the space of Dumaguete. And so, mapactor ang inanimo ang katung iyaan, you know, taperkapita effort. But one final thing, sir. To the query of Consular Esmea a while ago regarding inflation, you answered that, you know, pegging your formula to something which is national in scope might not be very reflective of the real situation in the locality of Dumaguete. You know, like Leo, it might be true. Except that, I noticed that in the National Statistical Board, I think they also have a regional inflation rate as well as CPI. So, more or less, you can localize to the smallest level a national figure.
Yeah, that's very true. If we look into the decentralized figures, then it would be reflected. But looking into the national figure, I think the correlation is not so high in there.
Thank you very much, sir, salamat.
Okay, so, let's go back to the orders of the day. Iso, si gan'to si gan'to, the marketing objection, the inaction decision. So, we would like to express our profoundest gratitude to Mr. Dr. Kri, Refugio, for the single's work that you have been doing. So, the chair would like to declare a recess, 10 minutes recess.